Okay, we'll call the Newport City Council meeting to order from Monday, May 6th, 2019, 6:30 PM. City Council Room, all members of the council are present. James Johnson is absent and his president, we have Stacy Tarian, acting on his behalf, and we have the city manager, Laura Gobin. The next item would be to approve the minutes of April 15th, 2019. Motion has been made to approve the minutes, is there a second?
All second.
Being seconded, discussion on the minutes. Hearing that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries. The next item would be comments by members of the public. We'll send that for everything, so we'll move on. The next item would be the local emergency management annual plan adoption and vote. This is a plan that has to be approved every year. Jamie can kind of give a brief overview about the plan.
So basically, it's just a plan for a major disaster, go up to the emergency center, who's going to be involved, who's going to be at the center. We name all of our, you know, key issues that we may have, like pulling grain, the fuel farm block road, things like that, that we need to be aware of. And then for administration, points of contact, so the mayor, city manager, set what kind of equipment we have, what we have available. So I sent out, um, basically looked at who we would use for a supplier, like office stand, gravel, ghost, and so on and so forth. Now it was this plan, and once we adopt it, it goes to the local management, they adopt it, it goes to file in case we do have major disaster, we're eligible for being with us. So without the plan, we're not able to.
Questions from council members on the plan? You have verified all the daycares.
Yes, yeah, we had a couple, and there was one that we took away because we passed away.
Then we would need a motion to approve the local emergency management plan.
I'm going to adopt the emergency management plan.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
All second.
Made and seconded, discussion?
Just one question. I noticed that Becky Patel, the Department of Health Emergency Preparedness Specialist, is not in there, is that, there's no room for that?
She's through the LUCC.
Sorry?
She's through the local management planning.
Oh, as opposed to an emergency?
Right.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
This is our, our plan.
Gotcha.
Any other questions? Then, hearing that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries. I just signed one line right here.
Right, just one line?
Both ones, both, yeah. First one's, you did the NICS 402?
I did that, yeah.
So that one, and then some, and then adopted.
Yeah. I was supposed to print my name, so they can read it. Moving on, the next item is waive fee and large event request. With address from the right department here.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to mention something before we start. On April 16th, we approved the events policy. And it was approved for one year. So on April 16th, 2019, the events policy was invalid. It was only good for a year. And that's the way the motion was written. And then it said we would review at another time. Now, part of the problem I have, and I bring this up, is because on the 318 meeting, the first one we had, I mentioned this events policy, and then it was time to look at it again. And we've had two meetings since then. So we, in effect, we don't have an events policy because we said it was only good for a year.
I think there's a different perspective. I think the policy is in effect until the council changes it, and...
It specifically says one year. It doesn't say maybe one year, or we'll go on whether or not we reworked it, or...
And it's on our agenda tonight for review.
So that's, I'm sorry, so that would mean that if you're saying we don't have a policy, we can't do any events until the policy's in place?
Not under the policy until the policy's approved.
Okay.
Did the notes from the minutes read that it was for review within a year, or invalid after a year?
It says move to approve the proposed events policy for one year.
I think we need to look at what the record reflects, because those are...
I can show you the minutes, I know what's reflected in the minutes.
I'd like to see that, because I think that's a disservice to the people that came here tonight, particularly when...
I don't need you to explain to me, or tell me about undoing, it's not correct.
I didn't say it was incorrect.
Let's keep it civil, please. Let's both keep it civil.
We have people that have come up...
I understand that.
We have a proposal or presentation to make that council has a right to discuss. Melissa and Jess and I have met, we probably put in 12 hours into our conversation that we're going to have tonight, with the intent of proposing to the council that the amendment's going to affect July 1st, so nobody is caught off guard, that there's a smooth transition.
I'm not trying to catch anybody off guard, I'm just saying what the motion said.
The fact that there appear to be no members of the recreation committee that were involved in that 12 hours of work is very disappointing. I think that's why we have a recreation committee, to ensure that we have diverse opinions represented in our policies.
The rec committee doesn't really get involved in these types of events.
They should.
I think policy is usually the purview of the organization.
Right, like the recreation department has a recreation committee, and that's the board that provides the general oversight.
And their purpose is very specific.
Yeah, the recreation committee doesn't provide oversight to the recreation department, they're just...
The mission of the rec committee and the bylaws that are there, for them to have the vibrancy to advise the city council on recreation needs in the community and things like that. If there was an issue and we wanted to bring a specific topic to them for review, I think that might be appropriate, but given the experience that I have with them so far, they're a group of parents that have very little spare time, and what they're trying to do is create events and vibrancy and activity to augment what the recreation department is already doing. So I think that if there was a specific question, we certainly could bring it to them for their opinion, but it's not part of the bylaws for them to oversee this type of policy stuff
So if it is the opinion that we do not have a policy at this point, then would be prudent to listen to the presentations, and then not approve tonight until we do have a policy in place. And once we have a policy in place, then we can review the presentations tonight, and then notify people whether or not their event's been approved.
That would be up to the council. Has the council concurred that there is no policy in place, or is that Dan's opinion?
Why don't... There are three organizations that have jumped through the hoops and... for events. We can still consider them, absent the policy as before, and then later on in the agenda, when it says the policy reviewed, at that time, we can review the policy. It's too late now to rearrange the agenda.
Regardless of whether you have a policy or not, the main thing is they're here to have us waive their event fees, policy or no policy, you know. So it's, you know, they came to do a presentation, they're asking for all of the fees to be waived regarding their event. We could do that with or without a policy, you know. That, it depends, that's just separate. We have a policy to help organize things, but, and to come up with what the structure, or what the fees would most likely be on the city, but we know that, we know what the cost is, we can have them do their presentations and go from there. That's just my opinion on it, because the main goal for them to come here is to ask for the council to waive the fees.
And then to quantify what those fees are, and then...
Right.
Where they come from, and then where they go.
Right.
So that's essentially exactly what the policy does.
It does, but we can still move forward with having them present, and, because the ultimate goal of anyone who comes to the council, really, in reality, is to get their fees waived. They want to present what they're holding for, they want to present what their event is, and they want to make the case for having the fees waived. That's pretty much what my thought process is. I don't know how others feel, but that's just my thought process on the whole thing. Bottom line is, people come to see us because they want the fees waived.
Right. I think we could still look at these things and vote on it, and then when a policy comes out, we can vote it then. But Dan does have some valid points, we just can't make these people suffer for our action.
So I think, you know, my, I think that we, you know, the actions that, obviously, this too, you don't want to compete people, you don't want to make things more difficult for folks, but I don't want to sit here in two weeks and have somebody come back to me that we acted invalidly because we didn't have a policy in place, and come back and get hit with that because you didn't have a policy and you went and broke these things. So if the council is confident that that's what's going to happen, I would rather lean on the side of making this, you know, this policy...
The basis, or excuse me, the basis of the fees won't change, right? The fees are what the fees are. So if we're just waiving fees, we're not implementing anything else.
Right. Do you have something else, Jess?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, if the goal was to reevaluate the policy in a year, couldn't the council decide right now to go ahead and evaluate these events based on that policy and extend the length of that policy? Couldn't you vote to move the policy forward and ensure three weeks to cover this until we had a chance to review tonight's amendments? Just a suggestion.
I mean, you could.
I don't know why you wouldn't. I mean, what the policy does is it tabulates those expenses, and it gives you the opportunity to assign them to the departments, and now it's penalized.
Right, I'll make that motion. We evaluate the present requests based on the existing events policy, but I'd like to also say, do no more until the events policy is finalized.
So a motion, that's a motion's been made, we seconded, discussion on that?
Actually, I would, I would like to make an amendment to the motion, if I could, to say that the events policy will remain in place until the 30th of June. The current events policy would remain in place to the 30th of June, so that we still have this policy in place until the end of the year, until the end of the fiscal year.
Because the new policy...
Would start on the 1st of July.
Which was the recommendation anyway. Or we have a motion, an amendment, a motion with an amendment, do we have a second to that?
Can we have the existing policy in effect to achieve the change, or...
Right, it would go to the 30th of this year.
Right, well, I mean, it's possible, it could be, if we review it tonight, or changes, that won't take back to the first, January 1st.
Correct.
Yeah.
So you want us to, you seconded her to the 30th?
Sure.
It's Dan's motion, it just takes it to the 30th.
Right, yeah, I mean, I just wanted to...
Okay, all right, so what's, the motion to amend the policy so that it goes until June 30th, 2019, motion was made, and seconded, discussion on that motion. And all those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it on that, and now we have an original motion. Any discussion on the original motion?
Can you repeat what that motion was, please?
Do you have the, it was soon...
From Dan?
Yeah.
That he evaluated the present request based on the current events policy, but not to do any more activities until one has been taken into consideration in the past. The amendment would be to remain, to keep the current policy in place until the 30th of year.
Yep. So any discussion on that?
Just to clarify, would that mean that we could review other applications?
Yeah, the policy that is expired would continue till the 30th of June, which is even this year.
And that gives you time to do the review that we're going to do tonight, take comments.
If that works, fine, it just sounds like a contradictory motion and other motion, but if that's clear enough, I'm good with that.
They think it may be contradictory, I think the second half of the motion, I should withdraw.
Correct. I'm thinking, I'm trying, working it all out, like we're in the help city, I'm thinking about the amendment and the motion.
The second motion says not the right one you want to go.
I was working it out, just...
Keep it in effect until the 30th.
So you're gonna, you want to strike?
Can you read the second half?
Where you said that based on the current events policy, that no more activities done until you go policy.
Yes, we'll strike that.
All right.
Okay, so then the motion's been made, and seconded, discussion on that. And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Okay. Now we'll have the waive fee and large event request, Jess?
So tonight, we have two requests for waived fees, two requests for larger special events. So these are events that draw more than 100 people in attendance, so we have some extra considerations there. A couple of things to note, the Green Mountain Farm to School, their initial letter requesting $207 and $1,056, their request is actually less because they did submit the $25 deposits for both of those events, and those events, and that's applied towards their fee, so that's just, you know, the application fee, the deposit. So the amount that they're requesting is actually captured on the column all the way to the right on your memo. The last thing to note is that the Out of Darkness Walk and the Farm to School Block Party, or, the Out of Darkness Walk and portions of the Lunchbox Summer Meal Program occur in the next fiscal year, so I don't know how you guys want to handle that tonight, but you know that the new policy will, if there is a new policy and it's adopted on July 1st, then that may...
Wait, wait, this is being presented tonight, so it would be under the current policy, even though that's in the next fiscal year, it'll be under this current policy.
Okay. Okay. So with that, if you guys are ready, I'll just turn it over to Mary Pash, she's going to tell you a little bit about the youth discovery program, and I'll turn it over to her.
Some of you know, the youth discovery program originated on the boat, with something that Chris had asked us to do from that Mego Watershed Association, was to come on board and offer some sort of educational program to the students that he was inviting. He started inviting all third grade students in Orleans County, and the second year, third year, he did that, he realized that just having students on the boat with pizza was not cutting it. So we said gladly we would come on board and help him with a little more meat to the event. Last year, because the boat did not float, we wanted to continue the program, it's been very successful, and so we again invited all the third graders from Orleans County, and we went to Crowe Beach and did an on-land program, which was so successful that the teacher said, "Oh, could you make this an all-day program?" So we're begging people to help us out, because we're going to do all-day programs. We start with our first one, I think, on the 30th, with 50 or something students that are coming from Derby, is that Derby School? I'm not sure. It's either Derby and Newport City Schools, both are bringing very large groups, so those will be big, big days. Last year, we did not come to you to waive the fees, but we worked with Jessica, and we did some in-kind work for her, both for her summer camp, and then also helping Andy with some planning for down along the beach and so forth, which is now being put off with the new plans for the bike path and so forth, but that was part of what we did last year. This year, we intend to continue doing in-kind work, but since we don't know quite what we're doing, because of all the plans with the bike path and the buffer zone and your walking path, we can't tell you how much money we will give you in-kind. So we've asked that that be continued, but knowing that we will be there, ready to help, and offer some assistance when the time comes. And I don't remember what our price is.
They were looking for $1,148 to cover the use of the facility, so the waterfront area, and then we do let them use the lower beach house kind of room down there.
Yeah, and the, yes.
Oh, I just, when you, I have a question.
Just listen carefully.
No, I just have a couple of questions, when you, when you...
Yeah, and it's the last, it's the last week in May and the first week in June, so it's sort of the end of the school activity for those students. Okay, I'm ready for questions.
Do the schools contribute?
Schools contribute by bringing their students, their buses and so forth.
Well, my reasoning is we have, the majority of the students come from outside of Newport, and that's the way I'm looking at it.
That's actually not, well, Derby has a big group.
Right, but I'm looking at, you know, I'm not trying to, I didn't say I'm against this, I'm just asking the questions, because Tony Pomolo's Foundation used to subsidize the boat, and do you still get grant money from the Pomolo Foundation?
We have gotten money from Pomolo Foundation, we did not ask this year the Pomolo Foundation because we did get a grant, MWA got a grant to buy some other supplies, which we would have gone to him for. Last year, he bought us 100, 20 wonderful binoculars. If anybody wants to know what are good binoculars to have for young people and for adults, they're really great, he donated the money for that, which was wonderful.
No, I was only asking because I know the other communities have a lot less tax rate than we do, and we have a lot of people, you know, come to the city every year, and for us to waive fees, and waive fees, and to do everything, to help with a lot of things for free, but I was just curious about the schools, because, as a question I asked, I asked the early childhood parade, because that's a big expense, and that's helping all of the other schools, you know, on our, on our tax dollar here in Newport.
We're a watershed association.
But it's, but it's the city taxpayers who have to bear the burden, and, you know, and so, let me finish, please. Who have to bear the burden, and I'm just asking, I didn't say I'm opposed to doing it, I've never been opposed to waiving fees, I just like to have my questions answered. And I like to stress that the other municipalities have a lot less tax rate than the city of Newport, and the schools have a lot less tax rate, and I just wanted to stress that aspect in this whole thing. You know, I like to make that point, because everyone seems to look to the city for everything, and if you go to Derby, if you look at their municipal rate, and even the education rate up there, it's a lot less than the city of Newport. So I just wanted to stress that.
Point made.
I think too, that something I want to point about this, point out about this program in particular is two things, these guys will be doing that in-kind, so even though their contribution here is $25, the contribution that they'll be making for the new low-rec path that connects the bluff side and the bike path will be far beyond $1,148. And the second thing is, because this is a water, lake-based activity that's reaching out directly to the kids that are in the schools, I think it's really important with our community plan, the way we're looking towards the lake, all the lake engagement that we can get in the community is even, it's a meeting that community needs, so it's a direct hit on that community need, which is one of your criteria in there, so I think there's some good benefits for this one in particular.
Okay, that's all I have.
I, you know, it's a wonderful thing, because all these young people will be stewards of the land.
Yes.
And we're teaching them the right thing.
And they learn a lot, they're very excited about it, too. And it's not, I, you know, we're not sure how it was going to work at Crowdy, but in many ways, it's better than the boat, because it's very hands-on, they get in the water, we look for critters, we draw maps in the sand, I hope we have sand. But, so it's really, I don't, I think if we can, we will continue to use Crowdy, even if and when the boat floats, I mean, we'll go on the boat, but we'll also keep this program going.
Okay. Go ahead now, you need a motion?
I'll make the motion to waive the fees for the MWA program.
Motion made, is there a second?
All second.
Being seconded, discussion? And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it.
Thank you. Thank you.
The next two on your list, one is for the Lunchbox Summer Meal Program, so this is for the community meals that set up every Thursday at the Farm to Market area, and also Green Mountain Farm to School is looking at hosting their block party, they did host this block party back in 2016, I believe, but just haven't had it for a couple years, and they're looking at bringing that back. So the Lunchbox Summer Meal Program is just a waiver of fees at $1,031, and then the Green Mountain Block Party is a waiver of fees of $182, and also the special event request, so approving that, that large event request. And then Sophie is here to talk to you a little bit about those.
Hi, Sophie, Communications and Development Coordinator for Green Mountain Farm to School. Green Mountain Farm to School is a nonprofit organization located on Second Street. We have four main programs, the Farm to School Program, which is in-school programming at 22 Northeast Kingdom Schools, we also have Food Hub, Green Mountain Farm Direct, bringing local food to cafeterias, retailers, hospitals, institutions around the state, or the kingdom specifically, and then we have the Harvest of the Month, which is a statewide marketing campaign to promote seasonal Vermont grown crops, and then, of course, the Lunchbox Food Truck, which is a summer meal site focused on filling the summer nutrition gap. We've been running the Lunchbox since 2013, providing free nutritious meals to children in our region. Last year, we served our largest amount of meals to date, at 1,800 free meals. We also have affordable adult meals for purchase, and we focus on, again, local produce in all of our meal offerings. So yes, we are looking to waive fees for the Lunchbox, we would like to return to the Causeway Bystand area from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM, every Thursday, starting June 20th, and then ending August 22nd. This time slot, and then that location, is really ideal for walkable communities and getting children nutritious, healthy meals throughout the summer, and it's allowed us to achieve a greater connection with our program's target population. So as Jessica mentioned, the fees that we requested to waive, I think it was $1,031, there you go. In addition to this, we're also looking to host the Summer Block Party. I believe in 2017 was the last year that we hosted it, if I, I was not working for GMFTS at that time. But the event is a big hit. It typically draws in hundreds of families. We coordinate with the Parks Department as well as a couple of different organizations in the area. It's to promote the free summer meals as well as kids wellness and other nutrition initiatives. So that will be on Thursday, June 20th from 3:00 to 5:00. Other considerations you may want to take, the truck, it's like a physical truck. It's 31 feet long. And we also carry our own liability insurance for that. Just one more note that I didn't mention. In addition to the free meals, we also focus on hands on educational activities and nutrition literacy and outreach. Questions?
Questions?
I guess it's the same question. This is a food truck, who do they, is it just Newport children or is it all over?
So I think our focus in our Newport location is definitely the children in, in this area in Newport. We do operate the food truck in Barton as well, but those fees would be different, yeah.
So one nutritious meal a week?
So at the Gardner Park location, it would be lunches on Thursdays. But we also have, I think we have three other locations this summer. I believe it's the, the junior high, the Newport Junior High will be doing dinners. And Barton will be doing lunches. And then there's another location, sorry, I'm not the project coordinator for it. There's one more location that we will be.
That's the high school.
The high school.
So, so is the purpose to introduce children to nutritious food?
It's to give them free meals, so.
To offset, I mean, one meal is not gonna make any difference in a child's life, one meal a week, I wouldn't think.
Well, I mean, I think that there's a pretty strong argument for the summer nutrition gap. So in areas where there's free and reduced lunches, there's, there's even that, those small amount of, maybe it's just one meal, but for families struggling financially, one meal for, you know, three children could make a significant impact on their food budget for the month.
Do the adults pay or do they, this is for children, but say I'm coming, the three kids, the three kids get for free.
Yep.
Do, do, do I have to pay?
You have to pay, yeah. But it's a very affordable meal, I will tell you.
No, I was just curious, that's just a curiosity.
I think it's about $7 and for a really good sized salad. And I also think they have a wrap option as well typically, yeah.
Other questions from council members? Then, there's no motion yet, so if you wait till we have a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to waive the fees.
Motion made. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded. Discussion from council members first.
I have a question. This is an amazing program and we've had it now for three years, right?
Since 2013, yeah, for a while.
Five years?
Yeah.
Six years this is going to be. My question is more, how on earth do we get to a fee of $167 for two hour parking on a gravel area? That's an area where people can park overnight. Why are we charging $167 for a vehicle to sit there for two hours to provide a service that our kids are benefiting from? I'm just curious, how, how on earth do we get to that figure?
So these are part of the approved rates that we have from council every year. And the Lunchbox, although they're parked there, they are using restroom facilities and trash receptacles. So it's actually quite a bit of trash that's generated every year. We have to keep an eye on seagulls and stuff that have their ways. But the, so that what they're getting charged is an hour rate for a green space that's been approved by council. So that's a battalion of it.
We don't charge the vehicles that park overnight there. And they use the same receptacles and they can use the bathroom as well. So it just doesn't make sense to me.
And they're not drawing in, you know, however many 50, 60 people a day to park there. So there's a little bit of.
That's, that's an awful lot of money for a couple of bags of litter. It truly is. Give them out.
Oh.
Does, does that make sense to you?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
It does make sense. We have to charge, you know, we have to have a rate structure for our facilities. You know, it does make sense for a rate structure. If I was a for profit business coming in and I wanted to have the fees waived for, I was gonna be there daily, every day or whatever, and I came in to have my fees waived, that'd be crazy because I'm tying up the space. And I know what Jess is talking about with the seagulls and how much trash is generated. I do know that and that's an expense on the city. So that fee structure, I, I, I agree with the fee structure. It makes perfect sense. You know, municipality is not here to give everything away for free all the time. Because we have people who, we have people in one breath want us to give everything for free and the next breath, they complain about the taxes. And so, you know, I hear that all the time. People want us to give everything for free, but then when they get that tax bill, they complain about it. So anything else from council? Do we have a motion? I don't.
Yes.
We did, okay. Your motion is made and seconded.
I just actually wanted to echo, I was gonna ask the same very question, Pam, thank you. To use that section of the front of the park, the bathrooms are like way far away. People are much more likely to go across the street to Wendy's, I think. To charge that much per hour for anyone, I can't even think of a for profit business that would, that would fit there, I think is, is really outrageous. And if we're gonna have public parks for people to use, then, I mean, it's one or the other. We can't be charging people through the nose and saying we have parks in rec. It, it, it just doesn't jive. So things like that. I don't know why we make people come and beg for our mercy. It's, it's insulting for the organizations and I would really like to see this, this process be abolished.
So to get back to the fact that we're talking about waived fees, structure, you know, rate structure and stuff is a whole other discussion. I think we should stay focused on whether or not we're gonna waive a fee.
Also, just to note, the restrooms are right in the information booth, the Chamber of Commerce building, so they're right next to the.
All right, any other thing else? Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next item?
So the next item is the Out of Darkness Walk, which Amanda is not here, it looks like. They are requesting, I believe, this is the third annual Out of Darkness Walk for September 7th. And the fees that they're requesting is $198 for the green space on that day. And I believe she had her letter in your packet there, so.
I'll make a motion to approve waiving the fees for the Out of Darkness Walk.
Motion made. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded. Discussion?
This isn't the one they have in the fall, is it? I thought there was one they have.
It's September.
So this is for the September event?
September 7th.
I remember the, yes.
This is.
You know, I looked at the month, it's, it's, this is the, yeah. September 7th, 2019 is when this is gonna be held.
You're forgiven.
Yeah. So anything else? Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. And that's it on that aspect.
Thank you, Sophie.
Moving on. The next item is the Planning Commission appointee vote. We have a memo from the, from Charlie Elliott regarding the recommendation.
I'll make the motion to appoint John Minnet to the Planning Commission.
Motion made. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Made and seconded, discussion?
Well, I'll just mention that I was at the Planning Commission meeting where Mr. Minnet was interviewed and he seems like an excellent candidate with planning experience. Happy to have somebody who definitely fits the bill.
So the motion is made and seconded. Any other discussion? Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. The next item is the Event Policy Amendments and Array Policy Review and Possible Vote. And we have, who wants to give the overview? Laura, you or Jess? On some of the highlights of the recommended changes?
Sure, I think we're all going to do that. As I mentioned, we've been reviewing this since the March 18th meeting where Dan said it's time to review that. And we came together as a group of interested people. Jess knows the policy better than anybody. I've been watching unfold for a year. Melissa was very interested in participating as an orientation for the work that she is doing here. So over the past year, what we have noticed most significantly is that the policy has worked very well in the areas of helping educate the consumer, educate the public in exactly what is involved in putting on a large event or asking for waived fees. And most importantly, tabulating the expense that's affiliated with waived fees for the taxpayer and for the council. We all understand that events are very important to the community. We're not taking anything away from people's passion about events. What we are trying to do is get them organized so that the final execution is a better quality product. It's also fair to the taxpayer to make sure they understand exactly what they are fighting. And these rates and fees that the council adopts every fall is exactly what those amounts are based on. So the council every fall has attributed a rate and a fee to every facility and every green space that we have. When a request comes forward, the first thing that happens is Jess sits down with the applicant and goes through the applicant to make sure that there's a clear understanding of, of what's involved. Some people are new at this and don't understand that they're responsible for taking care of, of their garbage, for example, or they need to organize porta potties and so on and so forth. So this is a way to make sure that they understand, particularly for a large event, the magnitude of what's involved. Over the past year, what we've seen come forward are some consistent questions that the council members have had or wondered about. And we did our best to incorporate that in the modified version or the amended version that we're being, that we're proposing. Under general principles, we wanted to be specific that the benefit was specifically for the city of Newport. We wanted to make sure that the city of Newport was highlighted as the benefactor of these events. Because as we've seen and as you've experienced tonight, you're having people come from other communities on Newport's dollar. And as we did with Wednesdays on the Waterfront, we noticed so many people from Coventry and Derby. And fortunately, their respective select boards were receptive to the idea of making a contribution to that. And I think that's fair. And I think that helps with the direction that this policy, that the taxpayers would appreciate that this policy takes a step up. So let's see. The other thing that we wanted to clarify is that council has a right to make a decision on how to address these requests for waived fees. You have a right to grant in total or, or grant a reduced rate or not grant at all. And the, the policy, the objectives and the general principles are intended to help guide that so that there's no surprise to the applicant. The other change in this is that with monetary sponsorships, we felt the taxpayer had a right to some accountability around that. So right now, you're giving blank checks to these events with no accountability other than them coming back and saying that was a great event, we want to do it again. What this allows you to do is to say that you will reimburse for an invoice or pay a vendor directly. That way, you've got some way to alleviate the burden on the applicant, but you also have that level of accountability, so you know precisely where the funds are going. You also have a right under this to ask for, for their financial situation and that you have a right to ask what other sponsorships they're getting. That's something else that has come up repeatedly is where, what other entities, either private businesses or municipalities are being approached. And that helps you make a better decision about whether or not you should fund the entire thing or do it on a reduced rate. The insurance is still intact. The, the area of fair and equitable dispersal is still there. The fees for municipal staffing, there's still that part. So the motions that we made tonight, what we'll do is make sure that those funds are taken from either waived fees or council special projects and moved over into that applicable line item so that the operational budgets aren't penalized. Remember that part?
We, we've already authorized the line item for the, for next year's budget. So what would be effective would be the ones that we're doing tonight. Will be affected because it'll be in whatever we've been doing now.
You're gonna do the exact same thing. So those, those line items will grow in the expense field under city council, but they'll show in the revenue field of the respective department that's being impacted. So we like that. We think that's a good thing because again, that's explainable. It's clear and is easy to digest. Let me just see, what else? The fees were the big one. Jess, Melissa, have I, have I hit the sodium points? Seems like I'm forgetting something.
I wish we could change those bullets to numbers because it'd be easier for me to tell you. On the top of the second page, it says, well, it starts on the first page, I guess. "In an effort to create long-term value for the community and encourage sustainable business model," that paragraph, if you look towards the end, we did put in, "As an example, requests may be supported up to," when the percentage is in there, so these are monetary, monetary support, might be. It may be supported up to 100% the first year, 75% the second year, 50% by the third year. And then by the fourth year, priority funding will be given to new requests. So anyone that's coming forward for a monetary value, monetary sponsorship, asking for that amount to be diminishing over time and that priority will be given to new events. If we're looking at at least.
Mr. Mayor?
I cannot in good faith consider this policy without seeing a side by side tracked changes. What's different between the old one and this new proposed one? I asked for the track changes, I have not received them. Just to hear the fact that you would want to reimburse invoices rather than waive fees, that would make most people's events impossible. This is just not tenable. And I, I will not consider it until I see the side by side of the track changes.
What you just said is not what other municipalities do. St. Albans in particular, Dominick Clod, I followed up with him. And he said that they only either reimburse or purchase an item that's specific.
I'm not willing to go there.
That's fine. That's fine. I'm happy to provide you the side by side changes. They're very confusing, but I'm, I'm happy to do that. So we can get those. I think Jess, you're probably the best person to do this.
Yeah, it won't be in the word document. It goes in the document, you'll see the changes.
The track changes. That's okay, yeah. Additionally, anybody who will be affected by this policy has only had since this morning to review the new proposed changes. And then, I'm gonna say this again and again and again, that is not fair to the public. It is not fair to the council. If you want to propose something new, please propose it the meeting before so that the public and the council has time to actually review it before we vote on it.
But that's why I had possible vote. I, I just, to review. I wasn't gonna put that in there and then I said, well, we'll have the word possible just in case.
I appreciate that.
And that's, but that's why I had it as possible, not as like the above where it was just vote.
Thank you.
I put possible as giving us the opportunity to say, okay, we're just talking about it tonight. You can vote at the next meeting or two meetings. So that's why I worded it that way.
I, I'm not sure if I heard you correctly joke, Julie Solis. For the piece about reimbursed, that, you know, either receipt or an invoice, that means it gives the opportunity for someone to be, for an organization to be reimbursed when they incur the expense, not when they've paid it. So if they order something, if they give us the invoice, we can reimburse at that, reimburse at that point.
That's a very detailed policy that I don't think we're prepared to go into tonight.
But, yeah. My thought when I read that is it's only for the ones that we actually write a check to.
Potential, right.
It's not for the waived fees. It's only like, say for example, Wednesdays on the waterfront where we gave, we gave $2,000. It'd be like, okay. It'd be like, okay, it costs us $2,000 for this one band. They could say it went for that. That's what a lot of municipalities do is they ask for a receipt for where the money is going. It's just, it's like a tracking thing. It's not, it's not to the owner. That was my take on reading it, is it's only when we write a check, and they're the only ones that I think ask for an actual.
Like you're right here.
They're the only ones that ask for an actual check. That's the way I interpret that.
These are different things, right?
Yeah, okay. Any other, what are the other big?
This is after the fact. They have to show the receipts to get the money.
Or invoice. Or invoice.
So these are two different.
No, they're not. Where do you see that they're? This is, this is after. So this is saying that we want to see, you know, where did the money go? And this is saying, you're right, and number seven is monetary sponsorships, we can reimburse when we see something that shows that you've incurred the expense.
So you have it in two places, which could make it even more confusing.
No, this is, they're two different things. So this is principles and this is procedures.
If they were two different things and you told me they're the same thing.
So number seven reads, "Monetary sponsorships are based on a reimbursement model where proof is provided for expenses incurred before payment is issued from the city. For example, invoices, order confirmations, or receipts are accepted. Reimbursement will be for the actual amount of the expense and not to exceed the amount of the approved sponsorship." What number two says, I think it was number two on that document. "Applicants requesting monetary sponsorships should expect to be asked to provide a copy of the event's financial records." It's not that one, it's the next one. Which one is that?
No, that's the one.
That's the one. Oh, "The financial records, including but not limited to income and expenses and sponsorship records." Those are two separate things.
Right, and that's what I was saying. This one is after the fact. You're asking to see what they did with the money. This one is, you're going to pay the money.
No, this one is part of the procedure.
So yes, so yeah, basically, yes, Dan, this is saying, you're right, this is saying that this is how you're going to get your money. This is saying, this is after the fact, we want accountability after the fact.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
The only other big thing is the dates. So instead of having these event applications coming in all the time and then kind of coercing them, I try to bunch them as much as I can for your meetings just because it's easier to just do a lot of them at once. Asking the applicants to come in during a rolling deadline quarterly so that we can kind of bunch them naturally because at any given time, if you come into our office, we're at the beginning, middle, and end of these processes, and it would be a lot easier to kind of bunch them all up. So we put together two quarterly deadlines to help us facilitate that process a little bit more efficiently. We give this to people in advance so that they know when the deadlines are coming similar to any grant, you know, process. So that was an addition that we put in here. The other thing that I want to mention is although this seems like a lot on these few pages to digest all at one time, in the field and putting this into action, it's actually been really smooth. And I don't believe there's been any users that have gone through this process that have come and given any negative feedback. I know I haven't given any negative feedback. And I know that with Mary Pat and with Sophie here tonight, what they saw in front of them today, they had no recollection that any of this was up for dispute or there was anything wrong with this process or anything. So the actual process when we go through it with the users is very friendly and smooth, and it's not as scary as this document looks. But over the course of the year, this has actually worked really well for us. So I just want to throw that out there. It's not, it's not super scary to me either, so.
One thing you've asked for is a parade policy.
Yes, that's right.
Now, I had a couple of questions answered, but I want to make sure. The Memorial Day Parade, is that standard every year?
Yes.
So there's no chance of that being trumped by something else?
That will go on as long as the legion and the municipality or the ones that partner to make that happen decide if they want to do that.
That will, so that's not being overruled by the parade policy or anything. Because I remember there's been that parade since before I was a kid.
I mean, that could be something, I mean, this is here to discuss, so you know, that needs to be put in there specifically. It can be.
You might want to put it in there just so that there's no confusion, kind of like what we do with the coin drop policy. It says priority is given to the rec, the biopsych, and the veterans groups.
Those days should be blocked out. If somebody came to you for a parade, those days would probably already be blocked out, wouldn't they?
Yeah, so the parade policy actually does have a line. It says here that.
Number two, parades hosted by city departments will be given.
So we're subject to the same process as everyone else. We have to submit our letter of interest, just like the coin drop. So we submit, you know, the prior department and the rec department will submit an interest letter for the coin drop, so you guys approve those first, and then you give the open spaces to however the things fall out. So we did include that provision in our intention and note that that works really well for us. I'd be hesitant to include the Memorial Day Parade specifically because things come and go, and we want to make sure that we're, as long as we're giving priority, that means any desire of being.
I just don't want a chance. I mean, that's something that.
Well, just because it's in our policy doesn't mean if the legion decides they don't want to do it anymore.
No, no, but I'm just saying, then it could be changed then.
Yeah, and it all consists.
See, what I'm getting at is I just don't want, I want a safety.
The name is the review deadline, so you don't want to risk that.
Well, I just don't want to take it, you know, have something that would obviously say, "Oh, oh, by the way, you can't have a parade this year."
Oh, and we also have.
And that's been going on for over 50 years. And that's just when I first read that policy over the weekend. I actually talked to Jim Johnson, I said, "How long's Memorial Day Parade been going on?" I said, "I remember it as a kid, and I, you know, and so I just want to make sure that nothing overrules that type of those traditional things that.
Can I just add that by doing them like in one quarterly swoop altogether, because there's a line item now for waived fees and money we give away, so it's not just this vast pit of just give it away, I think the council can better manage how they're distributing the money because they'll know exactly how much is there and how much they've expended already, and if everybody comes in with a, you know, $5,000 request, you know, that's sort of not in the realm of what to do. So I think it gives a better handle for the council to be able to distribute the money equitably. It's not just a matter of who gets here first or in the past of just having a bottomless pit.
Definitely makes it more equitable.
Mr. Mayor?
With this proposed parade policy, it actually, who does get there first? Because it suggests that requests for parades will only be accepted between January 1st and January 31st. Imagine if the Centennial Parade had been discovered as an idea on February 1st of that year. I mean, limiting the number of parades regardless of what's going on, whether it's a bicentennial year or some big thing, is just tying our hands so needlessly. I just don't understand why anybody would even propose having this parade policy that's this strict. And I get why the coin drop is that way because it's kind of a pain in the butt to have people collecting money in the middle of Main Street more than four times a year. But parades are community events that people are volunteering their time to put on for the benefit of our city. To ask them to try to figure out what they want to do in September between in January and the previous year is just ludicrous.
I don't necessarily agree with that. I think that major parades are a year-long process to put together just from my limited knowledge of them. And parades are disruptive to the community. I mean, they're great and they're wonderful, but to have a parade all the time, I think is disruptive to people who are trying to go about their business. I think four parades a year is perfectly adequate for a community of size.
Jess, do you know how many parades we've had in the past, let's say, in a year to year, say fiscal year?
It's about four. So we have some walks that are just on the bike path, those are included in this.
So three, actually. So we had the children's parade, Memorial Day Parade, the Fall Foliage Festival car parade, the Centennial Parade, but that was kind of an oddball one. And then I heard murmurs of maybe Aquafest. There was a Santa parade once along time, or a couple times there, but.
So, I don't know if this has been offered before, but I would strongly encourage the rest of the council to come out to a parade and watch what it is that the city of Newport has to do to get one set up. And I've said this before, the Week of the Young Child Parade is my favorite event of the whole year. I love that parade, I love the kids. There are 125 kids walking in the street. We have four police cars. The very second that an emergency call comes in and those officers have to leave, you still have 125 kids in the street. And so what these event policies are doing is not only assisting the rest of the city departments in scheduling and setting up any infrastructure that's required, but specifically for my agency, I cannot order officers in to do a parade. It is against the union contract. So if they don't volunteer to be paid overtime to do it, I don't have the personnel to staff the parade. Now, the Week of the Young Child, you know, usually have fistfights downstairs because guys want to be involved in that one because we all love it. But if the council doesn't understand the magnitude of what's going on out on the street for the event, it's very difficult to make these types of decisions. So the Centennial was an horrid example because, with all due respect, I don't ever do anything that large again because of the amount of work that was involved in it, but you've got to come out and see what it is, how DPW sets up an hour ahead of time and has every single guy from the DPW department, and I think including Tom, at specific stations throughout the city. Because you can't just say, "We're going to throw a barricade up here, and we'll put some cones up there." It has to be strategically done in a specific order, otherwise we're going to have mass chaos with traffic. We're going to have backups, we're going to have accidents, and then it's all going to come back on the city to begin with. So I have no prob, I like the idea of a policy simply to help guide us, but I'm strongly encouraging you to come out to a parade, and I will even pull myself aside and just walk you through what it looks like to say, you know, "This is what's going on here, we got officers stationed there, we all have radio communications, even dispatches involved," and it's something as simple as just a parade.
So one of the other things that's important to recognize is one of the reasons why your guys love the Week of the Young Child Parade is because it's during normal work hours. When you have a parade that's off-hours, you're paying your public works time and a half, and you're potentially paying your police department triple time and a half. So that's the other reason why the city has to be mindful and start getting our arms wrapped around what the impacts really are. And it is, we have the expense of the signs, we have the expense of the staff, we have other considerations, we have to make sure that the ambulance is aware and that the traffic patterns are aware. It's behind-the-scenes stuff is where the expense comes from, and that's what we want the taxpayers to understand. It doesn't just magically happen. As far as the Centennial Parade goes, that was two and a half years in the making. That was something where we worked with the Agency of Transportation, and we had their guys come from the Berlin office for a meeting more than once.
I understand, and I think you heard my point. I don't need to hear the backstory of two and a half years.
I do want to share, though, that there are, so three or four parades. We have provisions, this was built to accommodate the parades that we've had existing over the past few years, the ones that have come and gone. We've, I don't think ever besides the Centennial year where we maybe had a fifth, no, it would still be just four, we've never had more requests for that. As we adopt this policy, just the same as the coin drop, the community will start to learn and understand that there is a policy and that they need to be aware of those deadlines if they're interested in hosting a parade. This is built to capture the people that already know. The only new additional parade that I've heard of is the Aquafest Parade. They already know that this is coming down the pike, and we, our office is such that we know who those event organizers are. This information will go out long in advance before you, you know, implement it, I would assume, to help everyone learn that curve. But looking at a coin drop and the amount of work or the pain in the butt that is the coin drop, the parade is night and day. Way more of a pain in the butt to have the parade. And the other last piece that I'll add is, if we're having a parade every month in the city of Newport, they're going to start to be really sparsely attended. Having four per year, one per season, which captures the big times of year, the amount of celebration that we'd want to do around a parade is going to draw that critical mass. We start to have more than four per year, it's going to get a little bit sparse.
Mr. Mayor?
I've been hearing for two years, "What if, what if, what if we have more parade requests?" And it sounds like we're not getting more parade requests. Why do we need to be so, it's not even proactive, it's reactive in anticipation of requests that are going to overwhelm us, which we're clearly not getting. Why? Why put a policy in place that's not necessary? Until it's necessary, I have no interest in a parade policy. And I hear the chief, I understand it takes work, but that's what our city services are for. We have provided a recreation department to do things like this, not to charge people to have every event, not to jump through 25,000 hoops if somebody wants to volunteer and put on an event for our citizens. I just don't understand it.
It's planning and organizing, it's transparency for the taxpayer. It really is full circle.
How many taxpayers complain about the cost of parades?
Taxpayers complain about paying their taxes. As a Donkeyland tax collector, I can give you a whole bunch of different scenarios. Just had our tax sale.
That is aside.
No, it's all connected. The budget is designed and is supported by taxpayers. If your taxpayers can't afford to pay your taxes because you're offering free events, how does that fare? That's not sustainable.
You've always offered free events, and that is why many people live in the city. We appreciate that.
It is not sustainable.
I don't mind free events in the city if it's for the city, but a lot of these events are favoring the other communities outside.
Including our four parades.
Well, what I'm getting at is, I'm going to pick on the early childhood parade. I love the kids, I used to, I participated in it when I used to be at school. But the majority of those are coming from outside the area. And, you know, and I know what the chief goes through because I know what happens if you don't coordinate for a parade. There was a Memorial Day Parade where somehow the coordination, chief, you probably remember that, got messed up, and you didn't have enough officers, and we were marching down the street, and all of a sudden cars were coming right at us. It was because of the lack of coordination of that event. There was some miscommunication in quote-unquote, I guess, an email or something, I don't know what the details were, but here we are marching down the street, and there's one officer in the cruiser, and all of a sudden, we're being met by 18-wheelers. So that does take coordination for the parades, I know that.
We also had a situation somewhere where there was no coordination, and people were forced to wait over 45 minutes at that intersection, they couldn't get through the city. And that became a safety hazard, and we cannot let that happen.
That has no bearing on this policy.
It's the reason we have the policy.
We don't have the policy, and I hope we don't adopt the policy.
Your subject matter experts are coming forward requesting the council adopt this policy for all these reasons. They include monetary considerations, they include safety and security of the community. It's coordination.
I think it's our job to set policy, not staff.
Your staff comprised of subject matter experts are making your request, they're making your recommendation.
And I'm telling you why I am not in favor of it.
You're one member of the council. We hope the council will continue to enter into this and take it to a vote.
I was gonna, the one thing I would not agree on or disagree on, but when we pass these policies, for example, parade, they're not passing. Not only is the rec department, you know, kind of the one in charge, Newport Police is the only one that has the lawful authority to direct traffic, close off roads and everything else. So whatever we decide to do, even though we may be thinking of the recreation and the parades or whatever, we're actually volunteering at the police department as well because they have to be there. I know people will wear the vest and they'll guide the kids, but it's the law officers that have to direct the traffic and close the streets. And that's the only thing that I'd rather say about that. And again, as you and the Newport Police, it is hard to get officers there. You need to do it ahead of time to ensure that there will be someone there for the parade streak.
Also, the Public Works Department, neither the police department or the rec department could set a design package and do all of that layout, and it's not an easy task getting public works guys away from their families on Memorial Day. It's a whole community effort, it's a whole, all the departments.
Dan, did you have something?
I'm looking at this, and I'm looking at the parade policy. To me, the parade policy basically has two lines. You're going to have four parades, and you've got to notify in advance between January and the, is that basically the only, I mean, the other stuff applies, but those are only two lines that really say parade. And the other thing, I'm concerned that when we go quarterly, I was just counting in my head the events that we had. I believe last year was probably around 15. I don't find that so overwhelming that we still can't be on a two-month basis. That's just my opinion. That's just my opinion.
So with the, when I, when I talk about being in the beginning, the middle, and the end of all of these applications, there's quite a, a good deal of consultation that goes back and forth. Some of the events now are going on their second and third year, so it's pretty easy, but they still need a reminder of what needs to be submitted when and the deadlines that we need in order to get to the council packets. And, "Oh, you didn't put this on your map," or "You need, don't forget, you need to submit the twenty-five dollars." This isn't their bailiwick. So when they come forward to get these permits and things like that, um, there's a little bit of handholding there. And when our rec department has, okay, May alone, we had cleanup day for two days. We have, we're supporting the Recreation Committee with the mother-son dances. We have the citywide yard sale at the end of the month and we have the Memorial Day celebration. So that's four events in May. So having our events that we're trying to corral and take care of, forget the fact that all of our facilities are open this month, to be also helping to go back and forth with a lot of education to some degree and remind us for other people. It's quite a bit of work in consolidating that into different timeframes. It would be really helpful for us to be more efficient in our office.
But, but one of these is in the fall.
What's that?
One of these is actually in the fall, right?
But they still wanna get the approval ahead of time so that they can advertise and under, and know that they're gonna be doing their event, so.
Okay. Well, I think it's best that we wait for the tracking, tracking, so that, you know, we can see the, the changes. The document tracker.
Tracking.
Really wanna see, that way you can see the-
We covered everything.
Well, no, I would, I would've liked, to be honest, I would've liked the tracking because this weekend I was reading and holding the old and the new, kinda trying to figure it out like this and, you know, just to see the changes. I think it's easier to, or at least a document where the changes are highlighted in red. If that's, you know, there's another way of doing it is you just have everything that's highlighted that shows the changes, additions, deletions.
Ms. Mayor, are we still on the parade policy or the?
It was both, because it was, they, they, it was, well, it was kinda like both. And I thought, but-
Because I have a couple of questions. Were any events denied? If an event is denied, is there an appeal process?
Good question. Not, not yet. It would be the council that they would appeal to, right? And the council would be the ones making the decision, so I don't-
Right. And I think that people should know that. And we're keeping track of the revenue that could possibly be lost. For example, if somebody is using the park for, um, well, for that block party, let's use that for an example. We waive the fees. Has Newport lost anybody that said, "Oh, I wanted to rent the park at that same time"? Have we lost any revenue?
So there aren't conflicting events all the time. One good example we use is the farmer's market. So the farmer's market is every Saturday throughout the summer, which leaves that facility in that man's stand, which is a nice little facility. And you, pretty much in the, they either have to cohabitate with the farmer's market, which some events like the Out of Darkness Walk, for example, do and they do well. But then there are other events like weddings. We get requests for weddings there all the time and we have to deny them or say you have to be in after the farmer's market or choose Sunday. So that is lost revenue there. As, you know, as far as the block party, I'm not sure, I'm, I'm not sure whether there's a conflict there or not. But we do have conflicts all the time. We have to let people know that a space is booked and that it's missed revenue if they don't choose another day.
Do we know how many?
No, that's usually just a phone call, "Note, the space is booked, you wanna check for another time?" It happens very frequently. That's why we reserve the fields because people wanna use them all the time. So we book them out specifically in certain spaces. The ball fields is like a madhouse. People, the ball fields are massively overbooked all the time they're booked from, so.
But we haven't had any events in, in Gardner Park, the field specifically.
Uh, on baseball fields or on the green space?
The baseball fields, I would assume.
Um, not in Gardner Park, but up at Praddy Beach, we have a, a ball field that also lives on the upper multipurpose field and, and then we also have that space used for overflow camping. So there's a high demand there. And on weekends that we have softball tournaments, we have to turn people away from using the ball field there because that's where overflow camping is. It's just quite a few facilities that also cross each other and you can't, they can't cohabitate. Field two is right in the soccer field at Gardner Park. Field one is in the football field at Gardner Park.
I, I think in the past year, the council's done a good job of not throwing out taxpayer money in the form of donations to events. With that said, do, do we need the policy to prevent giving out money?
What a policy does is give you structure, okay? It outlines what happens, it gives you, it's your backbone of, it helps you make your decision. If you have no policy, then you have nothing to guide you in decisions. So basically, if there's no policy, anybody who comes in can, we can, we have no reason to ever say no or to say yes. It's just like, there's no structure to it. So what this does is it creates a structure to work in that creates an equitable playing field for everyone. So everyone knows what the rules are. No one has to go wink-wink or "I know this person" or, um, gee, I'm gonna get there before you. It's a structure. It's a structure to work in, so it's equitable for everyone. And it's accountability, it's accountability for us to the taxpayers who are footing the bill.
And I was a supporter of this policy in the past. But I'm wondering, you know, is it at a point where because of this policy, people may say, "I wanna do something, hold a concert or whatever." But, good lord, it's, it's almost impossible to do this and I'm gonna go here and there and other towns would jump at the chance to do it. For example, Isle of Van has their Pride in a Vibe. I'm sure that Derby or Coventry would love to, to get events if they feel disenfranchised with Newport.
I, I'm not su-, I don't know, having, you know, one of my past lives having to do events, have, filling out a form is not a big deal, I, I believe. And if I can't show a budget, if I can't show where my money's going and things, people shouldn't be giving me money. I mean, that means that I'm, I'm, I'm not being honest and transparent and this is where you, I want your money, but I'm not gonna, I'm that disorganized. A budget? What's that? Or, you know, I'm, I'm gonna spend your money really, don't worry about it because five hundred people are gonna come. That means nothing.
I, I'm just saying, I'm, I'm there with you on that and accountability. I like the fact to be able to say, if, if somebody calls up the city manager, "What's happening in the park?", or, "I see people there", and she could say, "Well, there's this event and, and this is happening and was approved in this council meeting." I understand all that. I like policies. But I, I temper that with, we wanna attract people, we want revenue and stuff and, and don't for saying, "Well, normally we rent this gazebo for X amount of dollars." On a Tuesday afternoon, when they wanna have their event, probably not a lot of people linking to this call.
It's really hard to do for some and not for others. The other pieces, I'll tell you from experience, there's, there has been two people that have started this process and not fulfilled it. And it was not because it was too labor-intensive. It was Phil White who's had experience going through this. And instead of saying, "I'm gonna go take my event elsewhere", he said, "I'll pay the revenue. I'll make the contribution." The other person, which is, we just recently got in last week, was the schools program. They, I, I started to go through the process. They're brand-new to the, to the whole thing and they said, "You know what? We have that in our budget, we'll just pay that." There's been nobody that has come and said, "That is crazy." In fact, some of the people that were here at the very first unveiling of this, which was controversial at its time, all still go through the process and say, "That wasn't so bad." They're used to the old, remember the six-page one that, that happened like three or four years ago? If the rec department had that, it was too much. But we've worked really hard to make this, um, smooth on the user. And like I said, although it looks like a lot here, the user doesn't get this. And I'm like, "Here you go, make your own lay." We go through step by step and I say, "Okay, this is what you need to do, this is the deadline. You need to do it, let me take a look and I'll let you know if there's any changes." It's really a lot more simple than how it might feel to you guys sitting up in that front table.
So you provide customer service to the process, to the people who are applying.
This just guides us in our office to, to know what we need to do next and what's expected. Because what used to happen is the rec department just should've said, "Sure, we'll do that, sure, we'll do that, sure, we'll do that." But the amount of requests that have come through, growing exponentially and always growing. There's none of these people that have gone, very few of these, um, third-party events have said, "We're not gonna do that event anymore." People like Green Mountain Farmer's School who haven't done it for two years and they're back. So it's not, we're not chasing anymore.
And I agree with you. You know, I think the levels of playing field, well, what really brought questions to my mind is, we had several events tonight coming for the council. They paid the twenty-five dollar fee and they had a bill, well, this is how much it, it would cost. And I request that we waive those fees. Each one of these, they're doing stuff for free with the kids and for our community and, you know, then I got thinking, "Do we do this to the farmer's market?" And, you know, especially the farmer's school program. I, I, I know that they, they go to Derby Elementary School and they're a good organization and, you know, it, it's kinda like you're taking money from a charity. It's like, "Oh, no, you're willing to do that, you give me a little bit of money." Granted, it's twenty-five dollars. Don't you feel guilty?
Well, there's also this misconception that because we're going through this process that we're anti-event. Sophie did a great job, it was her first time, she's new to this job. It's a great experience. The way that the council should be looking at this is that it's a good experience for these guys to get out and share with their council members, who are very high ranks in the community and know and talk to a lot of people about the things that are going on in their community. And they didn't have, they didn't- That's still gonna challenge them.
It's, yes, it is a, a great experience. But also there's that thing, I've gotta go there and give it my best because there's three hundred dollars riding on this, you know, that we would get billed if the council denies it. I, I guess, you know, I'm, I'm just looking, when we have these events that are free, that are benefiting the community.
Your events policy doesn't take anything away from them. It does not take anything away from that. What it does is it lets you know exactly what you're approving. You've never denied anything.
No, no, we haven't.
So, um, your events policy is meant to corral all of the efforts that are required to put on these quality events. When I started here in two thousand and fifteen, there was no process and the rec department was running amok. There was, um, some dissatisfaction from the council at that particular time. And there was a need to get the council's arms wrapped around what was coming. How do we plan for this? How do we execute a better situation?
I remember, and, you know, there have been thousand dollars and two thousand dollars and-
Yeah, but you also-
Running like candy, right?
You also had a situation where one hand wasn't talking to the other. So there might be an event going on down the street. And I think a good example was the first Rasputisa. That was before I came here and the Rasputisa started on Main Street. Nobody told the businesses. They blocked off Main Street. And it was a disaster. And that's one of the reasons why they'd never come back to Newport. Their one hand did not speak to the other. So the police didn't know, the public works department didn't know, the businesses didn't know. Only a couple of people within the city of Newport knew. You had about seven hundred people on Main Street and you had one of those big balloon things. There's total lack of preparation. And it's not the standard that we wanna recreate here. We want coordination, we want people to know what to expect. We want the businesses to welcome events and, you know, not a lot of businesses like events because it interferes with their flow of commerce. So there is multiple things that we have to consider. If we don't have a policy, then you invite running amok again. As Melissa said, this provides a structure. And maybe it would, um, maybe one of you guys wants to put on an event and go through this process and see what it's like.
I was there when the policy was drafted and I, I, I know the things, but is, is it the lunch-highest pit stop? And that's what I'm asking.
That's what the policies, all your policies, that's the question you have for everything. We've tried to make this, um, based on a working document, based on trends, based on what we've learned. We're trying to consider scenarios that we've already had experience but didn't have the tools to deal with.
Yeah, other communities have policies. Yeah, other communities have policies.
Thank you. That's where a lot of this material came from, isn't it?
I mean, like, like in Vermont, the communities, the large communities, they must-
Yes, yes, they do, yeah. Because we looked at, I know the second, the Gallantins, um, it was, it was a long time ago that I did that research and I could pull it all back out if you wanted.
No, I just was, so it's not like we created-
Some do, some don't.
Right, but it's not like we just created a policy out of thin air. We're just bringing the structure to the whole thing.
Only two more things.
Yes.
Okay, first thing, did the, um, changes we made to the policy change the application?
Uh, the only thing we did was add those quarterly deadlines. And we did put in a line that said, we originally read that for, for large events, so just the people that are drawing more than a hundred, there was a questionnaire that just said sponsors. People took that as, um, um, not, not what we were asking. So we were asking, "Who's sponsoring? Are there other towns, are there other people giving money?" And somebody, oh, they thought that it was who does the money go to. So we clarified that wording a little bit and then added the quarterly deadlines. So I didn't have the application to change.
And for me, I would like to see the, uh, application, an addendum to the, uh, policy. So that they're both there for us to look at. Now I wanna go back to the very beginning. Way back day one, somewhere around April last year, and you came in and you introduced the, uh, events policy. I had one question. We have the city and we have the applicant. I still have not figured out who that third party is.
Right, well, the third party is the people who are not the city. It's, it's a city, it's a city event.
So you have two, you have two groups. You have the city and you have the applicant. So for me, there's only two parties involved in the event.
Right, the, the-
So I'm just trying to figure out who the third party is.
The third party, yes, it's the applicant. The third party is anyone who's not, who's putting on an event, who's not doing it through, it's not a city event. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does make sense to me.
Okay. So if the city, say, the, say the council says, "You know what? The heck with everybody else, we're gonna put on a parade. The Newport City Council's gonna put on a parade, we're gonna find ourselves a big Cadillac, we're all gonna pile in it and we're going down the street, okay? And the city's gonna pay for it and that's a city, that would be the city municipal event." As opposed to somebody coming in who's not employed part of the city, they would be the third party. So it's, the third party is whoever's leaving outside.
They'd only be a second party.
Okay.
Well, I think we've discussed this enough for tonight. I think it's time to think on it and get the, the, the document where we can see the changes and see all that. I've just sat here kinda taking everything in. And I think the bottom line for me is a structure. It brings structure to the whole process. That's the way I look at it. It does. And the police lets them coordinate. It brings the structure to the point, well, we know how much resources of public works we're gonna need. We're gonna know, we, we're gonna need to know how much resources from the police department we're gonna need. It brings that structure is what I look at the policy as, as doing. Fees? Well, maybe we just, I don't wanna say that, I won't go there. Sorry. I was gonna say, we just waive fees forever and ever, but then that opens up a can of worms. You know, if you say, "We're gonna put on every single event", you could open up a can of worms where you could have people coming in. Because I have heard from businesses who say that some of these events hurt their business and the numbers don't show. You can track, you can track sales by the hour if you wanna really get into the weeds of the stuff. You can go to state database and you can go to all this stuff. And a lot of these events- And a lot of these events do not help the businesses and the numbers show it. But that's something down the road. But as far as the policy goes, to me, it just brings structure. The bottom line for me is it brings structure to the whole process. It helps with the planning, helps with everything like that. But with that, I think we need to move on. If maybe you could provide that document with the changes and do all that. We'll have this on the next agenda.
And I would just encourage any of the council members, if, what sounds to me is that this is too much for the user. I would encourage you to reach out to any of the people that have gone through this process. You've seen a lot of them in the room. If there's any that you know, ask them what their experience was and let that help guide you if that was your concern.
Okay. We'll move on now. The next item is the disorderly conduct civil ordinance update and review. Chief, I provided the old DC ordinance and a new one. It will be by the city attorney and align statutory language and court decision with the current process. Does that policy, because I've heard this had been updated since 1971, correct? No, it was in 2005, right, right. Yeah.
Will it apply or will that?
I'm sorry?
Will it work or will the ACLU?
This is, this is consistent with ACLU, well, nothing is consistent with DC. This is consistent with court decision.
Correct.
And that's what we care about is court decision. What happens after? It's what we need to be careful with.
So I'm not familiar, I'm not really familiar with civil penalties. So if I am disrupting the peace and I get fined $500 and I say, so what, what happens to me?
It goes to civil collection and the city can choose either pay an attorney to collect that or not.
Okay.
But isn't it $100 now?
That's what the new policy recommends because of the charter. Why, the charter sets the penalty amounts. Probably time to relook at the charter and the penalty amounts. There's plenty ordinances in the city that are not up to date.
At that rate, I can misbehave a little bit.
Pretty much.
Really, but I misbehave.
I'll make a motion to be approved. The disorderly conduct civil ordinance update.
Motion made. Is there a second?
No, sorry.
Seconded, discussion? Yes. First, council members, anything on this?
Ken, is there any possibility other than collections? I know there's civil violations. Is there, can be pursued criminally?
Not anymore.
What are some of the standard fines that our charter is limiting us? I mean, Dan.
Well, the charter limits us to what's in the proposed ordinance.
Which is 100, right, but.
50 and 75, no more than 100.
Right, but a lot of the state ordinances, things are like 500 now, right?
While you're talking civil traffic violations specifically? Yeah, there are, there are plenty of violations out there that are in excess of $100 absolutely.
Okay. Well, no, I was just thinking about charter. It's been 100 years and.
Yeah, my, my thought process is, this is, quite frankly, I would go out and violate this law for 100 bucks and.
Well, that's what Dan was, that's what, no, that's not what he can do. It may be time to revisit the city charter.
I'd look at it, I'd be like, yeah, give me another one. It's another 100 bucks. And then I'm not going to pay it because I'm not going to go through the civil process anyway.
Right.
That's why we choose to just arrest people for disorderly conduct and bypass this. But there was some societal influence that requested that we relook at some of the behavior on Main Street. So that was the purpose of the motion.
Okay. Did you have?
Yeah, I think a couple of points, if I can remember them all. I find it highly offensive, number one, that I could be penalized in any way for how my behavior or what I say affects somebody else to violence. The person in that situation that should be in trouble is the person whom my free speech has incited allegedly to violence. He should get arrested. But I have free speech, a constitutional right to free speech, and I should not have to think about, if I walk down the street and I'm, I'm seeing a group of Ku Klux Klan sympathizers and I feel like saying, everybody in the United States is equal. We all have equal rights. No one, no one should be discriminated against. And they, I mean, they decide to get violent because they don't think that those things are true and they decide to get violent at me. I should not be penalized because I exercised my right to free speech. Maybe some people would say, well, that was a foolish place to do it because you know that the Ku Klux Klan isn't going to be very sympathetic to those views. But thank God, in America, I have the right to say what's right. And I have a right to say it anywhere. And I shouldn't worry about whether or not you're going to get violent in response to me for saying the things that are right. And so I think what you've done here in this thing is to overgeneralize a situation in which you worry about one panhandler. And let me tell you, the one panhandler, when he comes up to me occasionally and says that he'd like to have some, would I be willing to help him get a meal or whatever? And I feel like saying, no, walks away. There's no problem whatsoever. So I do not understand why we are overreacting generally to my, to my general free speech, which I think all of us should have, without worrying about who it incites to violence on the other side. And I certainly don't think that with respect to that one person who's asking for money, he doesn't, you know, without any problem, if you say no, he just walks away.
Man, Jack, this doesn't say, this doesn't violate anyone's right to free speech. There's nothing in here that restricts anyone's free speech whatsoever.
Well, but it says if I say it and you might have a violent response to it, then I shouldn't have said it and I could be penalized for it.
No.
You would be the one that.
I'd be the one getting penalized.
Right.
It's for, it's for like me, if I got violent. You, you, if I got violent, it'd be me the one being penalized, not you.
No, it says that I'm not supposed to say anything that would incite you to violence.
That's not what it says.
No, that's the way I read it.
Oh.
I don't think you need, you need it. First of all, the penalties, as you say, are de minimis, number one. Number two, you don't need it for that one, you're really talking about that one person.
Well, this is basically an update of something that we've had in the city charter. It's an update. You should get rid of it.
Mr. Mayor.
Well, I'll let you go ahead and now get my thought and say something.
I actually started looking today for a model policy on the VLCT website and I didn't find it. And I got distracted and didn't go back for it. Once again, here's something that's being presented to us as an item to possibly vote on, never having seen it before. And it sounds like there's some changes that we might need to make to our city charter in order to make this an effective ordinance. So I would suggest that we do, that we review the charter first rather than adopt a policy or an ordinance that's going to have to just be changed once we do the rest of the work.
I disagree. The charter, charter's a three-year project, minimum, three years for city charter. This is something that brings our policy, I mean, our ordinance up to date. Am I correct, chief? Yeah, it brings it up to date. It doesn't violate.
I guess policy is not set according to client.
And when it comes to the gentleman you were referring to, I had him right in my face. Right in my face because I didn't want to give him money. Right, right smack in my face. I kept my cool. I just said, have a nice day and walked on. But that's scaring a lot of people and truly is scaring a lot of people. We've had business owners where he's discouraged businesses, people from going into their business because the business wouldn't give him money. And so, but this doesn't violate your ability to tell the Ku Klux Klan to go, go to hell or whatever. It doesn't violate your ability one bit. And if the Ku Klux Klan, your example, got vicious towards you, they'd be the ones in trouble, not you.
No, but I knew that it would create violence on their part, but I said what I said.
They have to refrain themselves. It's like I refrained myself that day. I mean, you know, it's all a matter of how you refrain yourself.
Then on the back, there is a, once, if it gets approved, there is a period where somebody can petition.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
There is, on the back of it, there is a thing where it said, people can petition to.
Basically, if, if you don't agree with this ordinance, you, you have to get a petition signed by 5% of the qualified voters within 45 days. 44 days. That's per state statute. So statute does give you the ability, if you so choose, to get the voters to get a petition to disapprove of this.
I've done that once before on something else, very little. Okay, thank you very much for that.
I think one of the things we're confusing here is the ordinance and the charter.
Right.
The charter only recommends the amount of fine. It doesn't detail the ordinance.
Correct.
So the ordinance is detailed based on court cases in the state, so.
Yeah.
So there is a difference, you know, the charter just says it would be 100 bucks. And I'll tell people something. I've tried twice in the past to update the charter and it turns into a mess because, well, back then, one of the big things was is that the city manager wanted the authority to appoint the court treasurer and not have an applicant petition. So there was fights over, there's probably only five or six places in there that is not superseded by state law now. And people fight over those five or six things and committees don't get anything done when it comes time to do the charter.
I worked two years on the charter. It came, it came to the council and it got shredded.
So, so the number of $100, is it effective to do anything? Probably not. But it's just as, as $500 is effective, probably not.
No.
Now, unless you put some teeth into something where you can pull a driver's license or you can pull a license to do something, then people don't care. They're not going to pay that. So.
But all we're doing here, this is to bring it more up to date, up to date in alignment with court cases.
Right. The first one was archaic now. It just is. It's written right by the lawyers.
Mr. Mayor, is there a model policy or did Stitzel, Page and Fletcher write this?
Chief, did you? Stitzel, Page and Fletcher amended what was already written by the council in 2005 to 1971. Where their policies come from, I have no idea. I don't even know that the VLCT has a disorderly conduct, disorderly conduct ordinance draft, so.
Thank you. I would suggest that we find some other versions and make sure that we're not going too far astray from.
I would just suggest that I rescind it then. We'll just arrest people for disorderly conduct because as Mr. Ross indicated, to go down the road of the charter change to make the ordinance have teeth, it doesn't sound like that's a very easy process. I mean, essentially what this allows us to do is when we have an issue with someone on Main Street, we can go up to them and say, look, you're acting like an idiot and we'd like you to stop. And if they say, no, I'm not going to stop, then we have the option of giving them a civil ticket and say, look, you've now been ticketed. Or we can just not have that and we'll just put handcuffs on them and arrest them. But the problem with that is, is that if the, if the state's attorney's office decides that she wants to decline to prosecute, now you've got all these townspeople coming in saying Newport Police Department's not doing anything about the problem. So it's the council's decision, do you want to have an intermediary, an intermediary decision-making process by the police or do you want to let the state's attorney handle the whole thing? Quite frankly and honestly, it's easier for me to let the state's attorney handle it. We'll just arrest everybody for DC, what she chooses to prosecute, we have no say in. And if townspeople get upset, we can say, I understand that you're upset by that. You should go talk with the state's attorney about it.
See, my worry is, is that for the police officers, it can become very confrontational with people that are disorderly.
I didn't hear that.
For me, police officers are in a bad spot when you're dealing with disorderly people.
Oh, sure.
They're, they're apt to fight back.
Absolutely.
You know, they're apt to do things where I have to have officers hurt. The easiest way is to simplify it. A lot of times these people go home, here's your ticket, go home, you know. Try to arrest them and they don't like it. So I don't know. You're damned if you do and damned if you don't. So we can go and look for a better written statement, but I don't think we'll find one.
No.
And I don't think it occurs that often.
No, most times when it rises to the level of disorderly conduct to the point where the police need to intervene, someone ends up getting arrested for simple assault threatening behavior.
Okay. Does the council wish to act on this?
Yeah.
This evening?
I would make the motion.
I would strongly prefer we wait until the next meeting when we've had time to get public input and review it ourselves and perhaps see some other municipalities' versions of it.
I think I made the motion and it was seconded.
There was a motion made and seconded?
Seconded.
Yes.
Okay, there was a motion made and seconded. I, we had so much discussion, I forgot. That's right. Okay, any other discussion then? Then all those in favor of the motion to enact the updates, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The ayes have it, motion carries. And as stated before, this was approved tonight, but you have, people have 44 days if they wish to appeal. You have to get 5% of the voters. And that, at that time, if someone presents us with a petition of 5% of the voters, the council then has to act on it. Because it's an ordinance, so we have to act on the petition.
I don't know if the 5% is right.
I think it is. Yeah, any ordinance.
It was not mentioned in the.
Yeah, any, any ordinance is.
The section is, so we'd have to go look.
Title 24 TSA.
Yeah, Title 24.
Right, so we'd have to look to see what their ordinance is.
It's on this page.
You see this?
Right here.
This is on the back page.
That's right from statute.
Right there, this is what Jim gave me. Petition signed by 5% of the polled made voters.
That's on any ordinance that we enact. Okay. Moving on. You see that thing up here? Okay. Moving on, new business. Do you have anything on behalf of Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, so there's a House Fund request.
So we would need a motion to approve. And this individual hasn't requested it in the past, whatever the time.
Over three years.
Oh, no, so it's okay then?
Yes.
So we would need a motion to approve the House Fund request?
So moved.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Made, seconded, discussion? Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. Any other new business?
I have none.
Nothing? Anything new? Any new business?
Thank goodness, no.
Anything new? Any new business? Anything?
I think there are old business. You've got to announce this.
The one new business would be the thing Thursday night.
Yeah.
How about, that's the.
Thursday night is an outdoor recreation economy. We focus on the informa at the.
Thursday night is an outdoor recreation economy. We focus on the informa at the Gateway, six to eight. Can talk about the improved border check-in, Vermont Fish and Wildlife anger survey. The Bluffside Waterfront Recreational Trail will provide an update. MWA is going to give a brief presentation on preventing the spread of aquatic invasive species. We'll have a brief presentation on destination development and marketing strategies. Six to eight at Gateway.
Okay.
Upstairs, right?
Upstairs.
Yeah. Otherwise you'll be a Weight Watchers.
Yes.
Oh, that's right, Weight Watchers is downstairs. Okay. Old business, any old business?
Ah, first, I just want to thank Laura Dorgan and Tom Burnier, who's no longer here. Keeping us praise of the sewer breakage down the Glen Road. That was great. I mean, you guys were all over it before I knew what was happening. Sure, Dan was probably.
I didn't know other than that there was a big sign just down the street from me. What I feel bad about is that in nineteen ninety, I don't know, ninety-one maybe, when they rebuilt the street, I was under the impression that they were going to replace the sewer lines. No, they never replaced the sewer lines. They put in a force main to the prison, but they didn't replace the existing sewer lines. And they were supposed to install new water services to the houses, but they didn't do that either.
There was a part of the prison coming in, correct?
Yeah.
And then, and then if years later, when the road had to be rebuilt, it only was a paving job. It wasn't any of the infrastructure.
Is that during the years of Delaney?
No, that's when they expanded the facility and they remit was the state was going to come in and fix the road that their heavy trucks did a job on. And it looks happy.
And they're still doing a heavy job on the roads.
No, I know. I know. But okay.
One other thing, Mr. Mayor. The last meeting, a request was made for a letter of support for the Chamber to rent the green space. What exactly was the request? And letter, I mean, what did they request? Would they request Newport to be partners? Like when they were attempting to lease the green space from the state of Vermont?
They, the quest, they thought that they could lease the green space, the chamber. They cannot lease the green space for the entire summer. They will only lease it to a municipality. But with that said, the only reason why you want to lease the green space would be for the resale of, the selling of product or food or alcohol or whatever. Anybody can sign up, anyone can sign up to use that space for an event. There's a, the website is extremely easy to fill out the form and to use the space.
I understand that, Mr. Mayor. What was their request for the letter of support?
They want, they, their request was they wanted us to support them leasing the space. But they, because they thought they could lease the space.
For the summer.
For the summer.
Not just for a single event.
Not for a single event.
But, yeah, I, I understand.
That was the request. But they, but they, but they didn't have, but they didn't have the funds, it's two thousand dollars to lease it for the summer. And then at that council meeting, Mr. James stated, well, the city was going to lease it. And that was shocker to all of us, you know, that we were going to lease it. And it was news to me and I think it was news to people sitting at the table. That, you know, we weren't going to lease the space. I mean, we were willing to work with him if he found the fund aid. I think we were more than willing to work with him, but.
And.
Our conversations with the state of Vermont again is they will only lease to a municipality if you want to lease it for the summer in order for an event to sell items or goods.
Right. So the, the request was to enter like a joint venture with Newport and leasing this or?
It's not my, I don't have that impression. And I think that Bruce has already reached out to Chris Cole at BGS. And I think that Chris told him he would only lease to a municipality. We don't have.
Well, and again, you know, that's a state of Vermont. I'm just wondering what they required from the city. And I'll tell you the reason I ask. Business owners have approached me as if they approached you in the past. The events that go on in the green space, they do like Newport. They love having the events here. But they indicated they could easily have it in a different town, which would really be.
But that's that misinformation. Wednesday, I'm going to use Wednesday's on the waterfront, for an example. They used that space two years ago directly from the state of Vermont without having the city lease it. The only difference is last summer, they set up a beer tent and a hamburger tent on that space because you can't sell on that space. That's the only difference. They can hold their events there. The chamber held events there in the past. It's just a matter of filling out that online form. So there's a certain undercurrent of misinformation being put out there that if the city doesn't lease the space, nobody can use it, which is totally false.
No, no, that's not the point. The reason that they had these events, what I'm thinking, is the bands charge money. And the band stand, they also had to either rent it or build it. So yes, they can get this space from the state of Vermont. But they're, they really have no way of generating revenue. To, not for profit, but to help offset the cost of what they're putting on for the benefit of the city.
Well, that one event got large sponsorships from JP, the hospital, you know, there's a lot of sponsorships that went into that event. I come at it that you can still hold events there. There's nothing that's preventing the holding of events. And I wouldn't have a problem if, say, we, if we didn't budget that two thousand dollars, you know, to pay for it. And if you want us or anyone wants us to pay the two thousand to lease it, we're going to have to find two thousand in the budget to cut. And, you know, we could take, if you so choose, we could take it out of that eleven thousand that we allocated for waived event fees and then you're going to reach a plateau. And you're going to reach a plateau, but that's not good till July first. And that's the, see.
No, no, the original question was, what did they ask for support from the city of Newport? And, yeah, they, they realize they can petition or apply for the space from directly from the state and get it for free. But when they had it last year, they were able to have like a fifty-fifty raffle.
Oh, they can still have it, they can fifty-fifty on there. They just.
I don't know. I thought they couldn't sell tickets or anything.
So it sounds like Vero and Andrea, they came before the board in February. They never mentioned that they were requesting the green space to be leased by the city. They haven't made any obituary to me or to Jess about their needs. This has been in the media a lot lately. So it sounds like maybe there's a phone call from Jess, I mean, from Andrea or Vero to Jess that needs to happen.
No. Again, we were really going out base. There was no request for the city to rent the space. There was no misunderstanding of, you know, applying directly from the state of Vermont versus leasing it. And my assumption is that when you are able to have a fifty-fifty raffle or have a vendor there or a beer tent, whatever, that that money could be used to offset the bands which come and give music.
This is proof that free events are not sustainable. This is the problem that we're having. They're running into it on the third year. They've got these expenses. They have these opportunities. But free events are not something that can be sustained year after year.
And you request it from the city of Newport, the letter.
Bruce wanted a letter saying that we support him in his endeavor of leasing the space. And I explained to him that the state will not lease it to the Vermont National Country Chamber. They will only lease it to the city. But then that night, we also said, if you can find the two thousand dollars, I think, I think we said that that night, if you can find the two thousand dollars, then we'll work with you and we would lease the space. Because it's kind of like the downtown group. They paid last year the two thousand dollars. We, but we leased the space because they only lease to municipalities. They do not lease to anyone else. Chris Cole even verified that this past week. Verified it. We verified it again with, with Mr. Cole.
The other, the other dilemma that we have, if we decide to go down that road, is we have no programming. We have nobody that's come forward and said, we want to, we want to utilize that green space. So why expend the funds when you have enough stimulus? So that's the other sticking point, particularly if somebody comes forward with short-term planning. I mean, here we are mid-May. And short-term planning, they can go directly to BGS and fill out the permit.
There's been no request provided from the, from the city.
Right.
I want to be very clear on that. And I understand, I mean, you guys have been in contact with the state and I'm sure they probably have preferences on who they lease your space to. My question is, in this letter of support, if we say, hey, Chamber of Commerce, that's great. If you want to raise the money and do whatever, we have no interest in leasing this space this year as a city of Newport. And, you know, God be with you. Go to the state of Vermont. The mayor may or may not lease it to you, but.
But we do have an interest if they were, if they came up with the funding.
And a plan.
And a plan.
What would our interest be?
Well, no, we were willing to work with, we said that night, if you could find the two thousand dollars and had a plan or what you want to do, we would be willing to work with them. Work with Bruce and the chamber. But he's actually been asked for another plan and still hasn't provided it to another meeting I was in. He was point-blank asked for the plan because he wanted funding for something and they asked for the budget. He still hasn't provided the budget. They were willing to provide him funds, but he still hasn't provided the budget. And this was something else. But what I'm getting at is, I heard a lot in the last week, why is the city undermining the chamber? Why are we doing this? Why are we doing that? But we're not. You know.
And again, that is not my thing.
No. The thing is, he was asking for the letter of support to lease the space. Because he was under the impression he could lease that space when he can. And that's why we said, you know, but then that night, they're not going to repeat it again. We said, if you can find the two thousand dollars to lease, to, 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 to pay for the lease, because that's what it costs for the summer.
Can provide programming if he doesn't.
Well, to me, the programming is not a moot point in such a way because if he's paid the space to lease, right? If he's paid the two thousand to lease it and then doesn't have any programming, well, that's his fault. It's not our fault. You know, that's why I look at that aspect. You know, if he pays the money to lease it, it's up to him to provide the programming and all that stuff.
And again, it's not, Bruce, I, there's been business owners that have approached with questions.
So letter of support, that was asking the council to, you know, write a letter of support for Bruce to rent the property.
The chamber, yeah.
Oh, the chamber, sorry.
I said Bruce, but yeah.
The chamber to rent it. I think that the council, you know, why would we write a letter of support for something that can't happen?
It's not our decision.
So.
I mean, it would be up to me.
Yeah.
I was a scout leader. Little kids would have dreams of being whatever. I'm going to do this. I'm going to do that. Back in my mind, there ain't no way in hell are we going to do that. Am I going to tell them that? Or am I going to try to say, okay, that's a, that's a good goal. What, what can we, what can I do? I can't guarantee, I can't.
You have to change state statute. That's the, that's what you have to do is change state law to allow, which I, which to allow BGS buildings.
Again, that's all I, my initial question was, in that letter, what did he ask? Would that have costs or put us on alert?
We couldn't have done it because he was asking for us to support the chamber leasing the space when he could not do it.
You can.
No, 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 no.
For specific days, you can.
Right, but he was asking for the summer. He was asking us for the summer. He wanted us to lease, to write a letter because the chamber was under the impression they could lease the space for the entire summer, which they cannot do. That's what he wanted a letter of support for. As far as individual events, we could write a letter if he wants to hold Aquafest down there. We could write an individual letter for one event, but if it's leasing it for the entire summer, it's a moot point because.
And he shouldn't even need a letter of support under those circumstances.
Right. He won't need it for one event because you just go online. I think I said Google links you asked me and that, you just go online and fill out this online form.
Right. And again, that's, that's not leasing it. That's just getting permission to use it. And again, you're back at the thing where to generate money or revenue to sustain it or to help pay for the bands or whatever.
The bottom line is, we were willing to work with him. If he came up with the funding for the two thousand dollars that it costs for the season, we were going to work with him because it would have to come to the city and be on the city's insurance. And there would have to be all that. But we left it up to him if he would have to find the funding to pay for it for the summer.
The reason that BGS will not lease to somebody who's not a municipality has to do with our services that are available that include police and public works. If somebody leases, if somebody rents the space from the city and leaves the space in a deteriorated state, then we're on the hook. Okay? So Wednesday's on the waterfront left it immaculate. Last year, we didn't have any problems. So by having an entity go straight to the BGS permit, we're not involved. They still get the same bang for the buck. It's free.
I'm assuming.
It just can't set.
And again, that gentleman said he spoke with whomever in the state of Vermont. If he was told there's no way in the good earth we're going to rent this to you, then why would he come to the council? And he must have been told by the state that, okay, we need to, we need to know that the city isn't going to lease this space, that you're not in competition with them, that, you know, they're, you're not doing something that's counter to the, the city's intentions.
I don't know if that had anything to do with it. When I spoke to Chris, he wondered, and Chris is Chris Cole, Commissioner of BGS. He wondered if we were interested in leasing it. And I said, we've had no requests. We've had no inquiries at all and neither has the downtown organization.
But to, in order to change it, we'd have to get state statute, state statute changed in order to allow individual or like the chamber or even the, because they wouldn't even, that was the first question we asked with the downtown group a year ago. Can you lease it directly to the downtown group? Because they were interested, right?
Downtown paid the fee.
They paid the fee, but they were interested, but that's when we found out that they would not lease to an entity, only a municipality.
Is it a statute or a policy?
It's a policy.
Is it a policy or statute?
It's, I believe it's a policy. And as Chris Cole explained it to me, if I can do it justice, he said, if we're leasing to an entity that's not a municipality, we have a business owning it. We would have to sell it. It's BGS property.
And that comes in, and that statute, I think that part, I don't know. There's some weird things there.
Jess had her hand up earlier.
Oh, I missed it, sorry.
You missed it.
I'm sorry.
Knocking down.
I didn't see it. I'm sorry.
I think the initial request was for, for us to write a letter of support. And I think that Bruce was indeed hoping that our letter of support could sway BGS. And I don't know if he realized to what degree whether it was policy or whatever, that he couldn't. The thing, I know that you were talking about the Boy Scouts. I, we, through our office, we get a lot of seasonal employees and they go on to get big people jobs and. and they go on to get big people jobs, and they often call for a letter of recommendation or a reference letter. When the state leases to the city, they have an understanding that we have a certain level of capacity. So, if somebody goes in there and blows donuts for one of these events, we have a public works department that can go and fill that in and be like, nothing happened. The Chamber of Commerce does not have that. If that were to happen, Bruce, Bruce, I think, is the only maybe paid staff there. The rest is all volunteer level, they don't have equipment, they don't have things like that. So, for the city to, to write a letter of support, I think there would be a level of sticking our neck out, because I know from experience working with Bruce on events and things like that, he's really good with ideas, but doesn't have a lot of support in the way of on-the-go work. So, for the city to say, yes, we think the chamber would be great for this, and, and that they're okay for all of the reasons that we know you're concerned about the insurance liability, the property management, and things like that, I think would be the city taking on, would be putting our neck out there a little bit, and we're not necessarily been proven in pre, that that is necessarily true. So, although it'd be nice to say, yes, we will go get them tiger, to a certain degree of, we have to be really realistic using what we know.
And I think that may be the perception right there. We may know, or we may have good information, that it probably isn't gonna be leased today. However, when we say, as a council or a person, you're probably not gonna get us, get this lease. So, we're not gonna give this letter to you, because, yeah, we're, we're not even gonna bother wasting our two minutes it would take to draft a letter.
So, if we put the letter out there, and then something did happen, the city has, so, and so the state said, yes, we'll lease it to the chamber based on the fact that the city trusts them to take care of this space in the same way that they would take care of it themselves. And then something happens, and that doesn't happen, or there's a lawsuit or something like that, the city, our, our names just...
There's so much presumption going on. I think Mr. Sheriff knows point is, we could in good faith write a letter saying, we support the chamber leasing the green space from the state. End of story. Not that we're willing to take on the liability if something goes wrong. It's not our job to influence state policy or anything up there, that's not our level. Our level is, do we support it or not? Yes or no?
But the bottom line is, we cannot write a letter, because we know that they will not lease to the chamber.
That's not our business.
So, why write a letter? I'm not gonna write a letter, or encourage the council to write a letter, if we know that they will not lease to the chamber. That is state policy. And I've known that for two years, three years, because there was a, there was misinformation out there a few years ago, where, no, people thought they couldn't even use the green space. And that was something that we alleviated by going to Montpelier and meeting with Commissioner Obahowski at the time. He says, no, you just fill out this form and you can use the green space. You can't sell things on it, because that's state policy. But for us to write a letter knowing that it cannot happen, I mean, I...
The way I look at it, Mr. Mayor, is they're not asking us to violate the law. They're not asking us to underwrite their, their funding. And, and that was my original question, what did they ask? And if they said, we want a letter of support, and some of the business owners were like, we had heard the city might be leasing it, and that's why we need this letter as clarification.
So, I'm wondering about these businesses, are you comfortable referring them to Jess and/or me?
What would that accomplish?
We could give them the story. We could tell them exactly what the circumstances are, and maybe they have a plan. Maybe there's more out there than we realize. Maybe the businesses are interested in coming forward and funding the lease. Is that something that's possible? Are they, are the businesses interested in an entrepreneurial opportunity to, where they would kick in some of the funds?
Well, I, I don't know.
And that would be...
My understanding is that, you know, they're not requesting the money from the city. That if they're not requesting the money, they must have their own source. But to give the, the money to the city to lease the space, then the city now is, with the events policy, trying to say, well, now you have to go through this. You, you've given us the money, but now we have the, this policy you have to go through.
What's wrong with that?
Why should they if they can, if they can get the letter?
But you still have your third-party event considerations that you have to worry about. You still have to worry about your safety and security and your cleanup. Because remember, even though we hold a lease, we're still responsible for the conditions. So, I don't think that's being unreasonable.
If, if we had the lease?
Yeah.
If they, if the state leased it directly to the businesses, we would be out of it. There is no event policy, because it's no drain on city resources. It's a contract between them and BGS.
So, the part about BGS only leasing to a municipality is where? Where's the credibility that that statement has for you? Is that, is that a credible comment?
And so, what if? We don't know that, we didn't talk to Chris Cole.
Could you get an email, could you get it in writing from Chris Cole? Because that was clearly stated two years ago. If you could get him, he was supposed to have sent an email, because every time Mark out informed us how he was interrupted in his committee several times by the commissioner over this whole thing. And the commissioners, and Mike asked the commissioner to send us and the people requesting it, an email, and he never sent that email. So, if you could get Commissioner Cole to send the email with a copy of the state policy, it'll put it to bed. That's, I mean, we've been here long enough, it would put it to bed, you know, in my opinion, I mean...
It troubles me the council doesn't believe it.
It's like, they, they think I'm a liar. I hate to say that, I really do. I think, I think you're questioning whether I'm telling the truth. I, I, I went to Montpelier with the former city manager to get, to get it in writing that people could use the green space, because that was the misinformation amongst the businesses, amongst the chamber at the time, amongst everybody, that that space was off-limits and nobody could use it for anything. And we got that, we got that hurdle crossed. And now, and now we've got this, and I, to be very blunt, I wish Mr. James was here. I was blindsided that night when he said, well, the city's leasing the space. We never discussed that with the chamber. You know, he, and he came here and he blindsided us, saying, and that got up to, oh, the city was gonna lease the space. And we weren't gonna lease the space. And we made that offer that night, if you found the funding, we would work with you. And he has yet to come back, he, it's been, what, a month now, two weeks? Whatever, three weeks now? He could have basically gone and found the funding and said, okay, I wanna be on the agenda tonight. I've got the funding, will you consider leasing the space? I haven't heard a word, not a word. And so...
And, and nobody's questioning anybody's integrity, nobody's saying anybody's a liar or whatever. I know that you have done quite a lot with the city, as far as, you know, when people say, what does Mayor do, I say, a lot. More, it should be a full-time guy, but the, the question, my initial question, and I think we've gotten sidetracked, was what did they request from us? And would it have cost us anything to do it? And the fact that we didn't is perceived as, as being anti-business. You know, we may know the end result, but it's the lack of additional support.
So, as an ambassador of the council, and the fact that you were here, maybe there's some corrective action that could be taken, since you were a part of the group that was blindsided. You know, to just leave it there and say, the council's bad, the council's anti-business, because we were blindsided by somebody who said, oh, you're gonna do this. We met with Bruce in advance, promised us he wouldn't blindside us. He understood at that particular meeting that we would lease the space if we had a funder and we had programming, we had no stimulus. So, it's very convenient how this has turned into the city council being the bad guy, when you guys do a lot. It's, it's, that's an unfair characterization, particularly if you look at what you gave away tonight, what you supported tonight. So, there's, there's a misnomer out there. When you think about all the programming and the services that the city already offers, that there's a belief that we need to do more and do it free. It's not sustainable, it's not fair. The services that we do provide are competent and capable and cost-effective. You keep giving stuff away, it's not gonna be cost-effective, it's not gonna be sustainable.
Absolutely, and I agree one, one thousand percent.
And nothing is free.
We're not your ATM to give out money. Again, I was just...
Aren't you glad you asked?
Why, why couldn't we write the letter?
I think it goes back to what Jess pointed out, you're putting your neck out in a way that...
Okay, I think, yeah, I'm looking at the hour. Any other old business, anything?
Nothing.
The only old business I had was, I'm sure everybody knows, but we were awarded the eighty-five thousand for the intersection from the downtown transportation, which is good news to redo this intersection. And that includes flights for the crosswalks in that intersection?
It does, red flashing becas...
The fashion for the crosswalk?
It includes better curving.
Okay.
And it includes safety features out there, that we don't have a wider field to add for the loading trucks.
Okay, anything?
You wanna mention the AARP?
Oh, we applied for three thousand for the Vermont Chapter of AARP, and they said no. But, um, they thought our project was great, but they had so many requests come in, so, on that one. But that's all I have, any old business, anything?
Just quick, last year, we appointed another person to sign warrants. We appointed Dennis.
You're right, we need somebody in case I can't do it.
And I would thought it would be Julie, if she would volunteer.
If you work just on the street, right?
Yeah, so, but Melissa does as well.
Just one other person, just in case I can't make it. Because there was one time I did call Dennis to come in, because I was out of town. So, we should appoint somebody else, I mean, whoever can...
Would make sense to be the president.
Yeah.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, I hope that we appoint the mayor and/or Julie to approve and sign warrants for the disbursement of operating expenses.
And motion's been made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded discussion? Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, aye, sever, motion carries. Glad you picked that, forgot about that. Good catch on that one, I forgot about that.
Anything, don't put in on somebody else, I'm happy.
Oh, anything else, old business? Any old business? All right, the next meeting will be Monday, May twentieth, at six-thirty P.M. We need a motion to adjourn at eight-fifty-two.
Motion for adjournment.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
If you get all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, or adjourn.